The October 22nd, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council and Housing Authority are called to order with all members present. Associate Pastor Wendell Gardner from the Ocean Gate Ministries will be doing the invocation tonight, and we're going to ask Councilmember Mike Tayeda to do the Pledge of Allegiance today. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today thanking you for the city of Hawthorne. We pray now, Lord God, that you would bless this meeting. We pray, Lord God, that every member would be blessed so that they would be able to lead and serve with strength and humility. We just ask that the fruits of this meeting, oh Lord God, will go to the benefit and the blessing of the residents of the city of Hawthorne. We just lift this up all before you, and we ask you to bless it in Jesus's name. Amen.
If you face a flag, put your hand over your heart and beat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
Thank you all for being here. We have four items on the presentations. So we're going to ask just our members to please, and the presenters to please limit it to five to 10 minutes, please, just so we can get to the rest of the meeting, okay? Thank you so much. Councilmember Tayeda has a presentation on the agenda. Are we ready for that?
I can go second?
You can go second, sure. Councilmember, we're going to proceed with Councilmember Montero, who has a presentation on tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. On September 21st this year, the California Lions Friends Insight conduct their first vision screening in District 4 L3 and in the city of Hawthorne at the Singer Center. So there were near about 200 clients being seen that day, and 20 of which did not need glasses, 149 did receive a pair of glasses free, and others are having glasses made up and delivered to their homes. So there was about 200 individuals who show up at the memorial center, at the Singer Center, and the Lions Club, especially the California Lions Friends Insight, you know, brought about 15,000 pairs of glasses, and they were ready to give glasses to the people who needed, because they did the examination, they collaborate the glasses, and then give them the glasses. And then 55 other people were referred for more, possibly surgery. So I'm going to call the District President, I don't know if he is here, Ken. Mr. Ken, if you can come up to the podium, because I have a proclamation, and also I have some certificates of all the doctors that who show up that day, so I want you just to give us a brief summary of what this Friends Insight is all about, please.
Sure. Again, I want to say thank you for this opportunity and the recognition, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, that I know it's, your community service is indeed valuable. I served on the La Mita City Council for three terms, and mayor three times during those 12 years, so I know what the time commitment is for you. Again, my name is Ken Blackwood, and I'm the past District Governor, and also a member of California Lions Friends Insight Board of Directors, and I just want to say, again, say thank you for the recognition. And Councilmember Montero went over some of the statistics. Fifty-five of those people that were also screened received glasses for the very first time, which was, it's an incredible feeling when you see somebody put glasses on and the smile comes to their face, because that's, you know, they're seeing life clearly. Gives you goosebumps. It's during these screenings that the local licensed doctors who volunteer their time provide free health assessments, and if necessary, recycle glasses. Vision screening does not replace the comprehensive examination. It is a screening, and if they do need to be referred, they're referred on to a doctor for a more comprehensive eye exam. Like the councilmember said, they brought over 15,000 pairs of glasses, and it's these glasses that are provided to the client. The screenings conducted at the Hawthorne Senior Center again saw nearly 200 attendees, and they're scheduled to come back November of 2020. California Lions Friends Insight schedule about 32 screenings in Southern California and Northern Mexico each year, and they bring out the equipment where the local opticians, ophthalmologists or opticians volunteer their time and come out and use the equipment that's brought to the site along with the inventory of 15,000 pairs of glasses to see clients' residency, financial ability to pay, they see whoever shows up. That's the only criteria, just show up. The organization also has a great website, and again, it's called the California Lions Friends Insight, where you can go and see the calendar of where the screenings will be all the way through the year 2020. And also, again, it's next year, it's on November 14th, 2020, they'll be back, but there are in other communities near here. Also on the website is information regarding if you want to make a donation, because this is all free to the client. So they survive through corporate donations and public donations, so you can go to their site and see how to make a donation in order to, there's no paid staff, so all the donations go for equipment replacement or equipment purchase, or just putting gas in the vehicles to get the equipment out to the site. Again, thank you so much for the recognition. We also have several other Lions that I'd like to introduce. We have Rocky and Blandina Ferreira. Their committee did free diabetes screening that day, and we have Alaric Simon, who is the president of the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club, your local Lions Club here, and just say thank you.
Okay, so I have a proclamation for the California Lions Friends Insight, so, because your work is outstanding, because you guys have been, you know, thousands of thousands of these screening, you know, all through the California and north of Mexico, so it is commanded. So the proclamation is going to go for the Friends Insight, and then I have all these certificates for all the doctors that did show up that day, so I'm not going to read all of them, but, you know, you can just give it to them, because I had a list of them. And also, I do have a proclamation for the diabetes program, because they have been doing, you know, glucose and diabetes screening for many, many years also, so thank you for your work. So this proclamation is for you, and also I do have certificates for all the volunteers that did help screen those 100 people for the diabetes and glucose. So thank you very much, and I'm going to give these certificates to you. If you guys take a picture?
Absolutely.
All right, let's go. Thank you.
I'd also like to say that Councilmember Alex is a Lion Club member, so, and...
And I brought you glasses.
Thank you so much, and I brought you a box, perhaps you can place it at City Hall to receive recycled eyeglasses, and there's a contact information on the back, so we can come pick it up when it gets full.
So again, thank you very much for the Lions Club, and we know, you know, we have a lot of Lions all over the world, so, and the mission of the Lions is to give sight to all the blinds in the world, so thank you for giving that, thank you.
Councilmember Montero, I also want to congratulate the Lions Club for what they do, for you being part of it, for Mr. Alaric Simon for stepping up as the local president of the Lions Club, and what you do with regards to the eyeglasses is so important. You know, there's eyeglasses and getting prescription eyeglasses can be so overpriced at times, it almost makes it prohibitive. I mean, I went to try to get my glasses, I have to wait till next year before the insurance can help me out. I mean, I mean, I'll probably buy them, but it's 500 bucks, 400 bucks, 350 bucks? I mean, come on, you know? I mean, it almost sounds like those prescription drug things where they overprice stuff just to make money, et cetera, so what you guys do is very important, and I commend you for that. I just wanted to let you know that.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine has a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this time, I would like to present Minister Imam Tarek Malik from the Al-Maddiah Muslim Community on the Al-Maddiah Muslim Community's effort to promote peace and justice. Welcome, Minister Malik.
Bismillah, Rahman, and Rahim. In the name of Allah, the gracious, the ever merciful. First of all, I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to share with you the efforts done by Ahmadiya Muslim Community to promote the peace and justice in the world. The Ahmadiya Muslim Community is not an organization founded by any man and for worldly purpose, but it was founded by God, the Almighty, under the umbrella of Islam. The founder of our community, His Holiness Hazrat Mirza Ulam Ahmed, was raised by God as second advent of Jesus Christ, and was given the title of the promised Messiah. He was ordered by God to found this great Muslim community, so he founded the community on March 23rd, 1889, in a small Indian village known as Kadayan in the province of Punjab. Let's hear what was the fundamental principle of Hazrat Mirza Ulam Ahmed of Kadayan. His Holiness says, "The principle to which we adhere is that we have kindness at heart for the whole of mankind." Let me mention that the word Islam means peace and complete submission to God. So Ahmadiya Muslim Community always promotes peace and tries its best to create the harmonious environment. We believe that all the prophets who were sent by God in any era or in any country were true, and having belief in them is an essential part of Islamic teachings. So we have relations with the leaders of every belief and religion, because their prophets are our prophets as well. The Ahmadiya Muslim Community, by the grace of Allah, has built thousands and thousands mosques in 213 countries, because we believe that the true peace and justice cannot be established unless we learn the word of God, understand, and practice it. The spiritual head of Ahmadiya Muslim Community, His Holiness Hazrat Mirza Masrur Ahmed, the fifth successor of the promised Messiah, has visited many countries where he was presented, he has presented the true Islamic teachings to remove misunderstandings about Islam. Many of his speeches are published and are available in his book titled, "World Crisis and the Pathway to Peace." His Holiness Hazrat Mirza Masrur Ahmed is conscious and worried about the current political situation and global peace. That's why he wrote letters to the world political leaders, giving them suggestions to avoid the Third World War. For example, he wrote letters to His Holiness Pope Benedict XVI, the Prime Minister of Israel, the President of the Islamic Republic of Iran, the President of the United States of America, the Prime Minister of Canada, the King of the Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, the Premier of the State Council of the People's Republic of China, the Prime Minister of the United Kingdom, Chancellor of Germany, President of the French Republic, His Majesty, the Queen of the United Kingdom, and Commonwealth realms, the Supreme Leaders of the Islamic Republic of Iran, the President of the Russian Federation, et cetera. Hazrat Mirza Ulam Ahmed of Kadayan, the founder of our community, wrote 85 books in which he presented true teachings of Islam, answered the false allegation against Islam, the Holy Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, and refuted false allegations against many other biblical prophets, because we believe in all of them. He also was told by God that Jesus, Son of Mary, Allah Sallatu Wasallam, peace be with him, who was a true prophet of God, had died. So he wrote a book titled, "Jesus in India," and proved with the Bible, the Holy Quran, history, and medicine, that Jesus did not die on the cross, but he was unconscious when was put off the cross. He recovered and migrated to Kashmir, crossing Iran, Afghanistan, and India. He lived in Kashmir and died at the age of 120 years, and was buried in Muhalla Khanjar of Srinagar. His tomb still exists and is visited by people on daily basis. He also mentioned that Islam was not spread by sword, but through its beautiful teachings. So killing non-Muslims in the name of jihad is against the Islamic teachings, His Holiness states. "The prevalent tradition among the Muslims of attacking people of other religions which they call jihad is a grievous sin and a violation of the clear instructions from God and His Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam." The Ahmadiya Muslim Community is a global organization and has been established in 213 countries. Many world-famous people are proud and blessed through accepting the promised Messiah. For example, Dr. Abdul Salam, first Muslim Nobel Laureate in Physics in 1979, Sir Choudhury Muhammad Dafurla Khan, who served as Pakistan's first foreign minister and president of the United Nations General Assembly and president of the International Court of Justice. Serving humanity without distinction, without distinction of race, color, and religion is an essential part of Islamic teachings. So Ahmadiya Muslim Community is blessed with having opportunity to serve the humanity in various countries. The community is serving humanity in many ways, but I would like to mention only one of our organizations. This organization is Humanity First. Apart from many other countries, Humanity First is registered in UNO as well, and is serving in 53 countries. In two decades, Humanity First has quickly grown into a leading international human development and disaster relief organization, impacting more than 4.5 million lives. Some of its main projects are Knowledge for Life, Learn a Skill, Water for Life, Global Health, Disaster Relief, Food Security, et cetera. We have launched six campaigns in the United States since 2010. These are Muslim for Peace, Muslims for Loyalty, Muslims for Life, Stop the Crisis Through Islam, and Muslims for Justice. His Holiness Hazrat Mirza Masrur Ahmed received a key to the city of Los Angeles from Mayor Eric Garcetti. His Holiness Mirza Masrur Ahmed visited the USA Capitol on June 27th, 2012, and delivered a keynote speech.
My apologies for interrupting, we have two minutes left.
At the end, I would like to share with you some words of that speech he stated. "Peace and justice are inseparable. You cannot have, you cannot have one without the other. Yet, in general, there is little doubt that restlessness and anxiety is increasing in the world, and so disaster is spreading. This clearly proves that somewhere along the line, along the line, the requirements of justice are not being fulfilled. I pray that everyone who is working for the benefit of mankind in any form, in any country, in any religion, may become successful so that we can live in a better and more peaceful world." Amen. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and introducing us to your tradition, and I think a lot, for all of you out there, I think one of the things that we, we're, how are we brothers and sisters? I think a lot of us don't really realize, is think, oh, this is a bit more foreign than we think. There's more commonality. Jews, Christians, and Muslims are all descendants of Abraham. There was like, Abraham had a child through Sarah, who was Isaac, so that started the Jewish line, and the Jewish tradition, and the Christianity came from that. And then he also had another kid with another lady, Hagar, and who was Ishmael, and that started the Arab, the Muslim tradition. So there's a commonality, we all go back to Abraham, so, you know, it's not that, it's not that foreign, so that's why there's prophets that are common between all religions. So it's important to know and just to remember that there's more commonality sometimes than we think, okay?
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and I, and I want to thank the Al-Maddiah Muslim Community for coming, and I think, I think it's worth pointing out that it was important to them to come and to say to us, and I think we needed to hear this, that they, they believe that killing non-Muslims in the name of jihad is a sin, and I think not enough Muslims say that out loud so that Americans can hear it. But I thank them for saying that, and I want to also thank them that they have founded six campaigns for peace in the United States since 2010. They are obviously a community that really believes in peaceful coexistence, so I want to thank them for coming.
Councilmember Tayeda has a presentation on the agenda, Councilmember?
Okay. We have a lot of people here tonight, and I bet you're wondering why, but we have a terrific soccer team, and I want to talk about them a little bit and recognize our kids, because we have some phenomenal kids in our community doing tremendous work and some terrific coaches and leadership, and I want to talk a little bit about the Blue Strikers. Now, these glasses are not that good, I might have to, you know, reach out, but we're, we're going to talk about the Blue Strikers. You guys raise your hand in the crowd? Okay, I'm going to tell you what these kids did. This group of young men played together during the fall season of AYSO 2018-2019. They won their first 14 games and qualified for the playoff. At the playoff, they won all their games and became regional champions, that's the immediate area. The regional, as regional champs, they became regional representatives and advanced to the area playoff. The following weekend, they participated in another tournament called the Commissioners Cup. They won first place, so now champs of the Commissioners Cup, 21 games without a loss. After the winter break, they faced an opponent from other regions, and they won all five games, moved to a much harder tournament as a number one seed. The next tournament was called the Sectional Playoffs, which is the Southland teams from Santa Monica, Corona, San Diego. Even with a bunch of injuries, they went on to win and achieve first place of their, to win first place now. Their biggest challenge was coming up, which was the Western States Championship. They had, now, they had all their players healthy, they played two games, they won the first game, and then the next one was the final one and the tough one, and that was against the Sacramento City, Sacramento Winter City. This was a hard fought fight that ended up in a tie. They moved to the penalty phase, and the penalty ended up in a dramatic finish when the goalie converted his kick to win. So here, we have our kids from Hawthorne beat everybody. They played 33 games without a loss. They played the area, the regions, the city, the state, and went on to win. They played the area, the regions, the city, the state, and went on to win Western States Champion. So let's hear it for this team. I want you guys, and, you know, I don't want it to be lost on this, but the head coach, Carlos, where were you at? Carlos Aguirre and Assistant Coach Raphael Bryant. But please, you guys, listen. I got something for you, so get your, get your, get your people up here.
That's right. Thousands of hours, I know.
This is, hi, you guys. You know, none of this, come here, come here, because this is informal, but what you guys did is fantastic, you know? The amount of time that these guys put in with these kids and all the hours and all the miles and all the money, you know, is just amazing. And I'm sure that in those group of kids, they're going to learn something from these two guys that they're going to be able to use for the rest of their lives. And, you know, I have two presentations for them. One is for the head coach, okay? Okay, this is a certificate of recognition, probably presents the Blue Strikers of AUSO Region Twenty-One Hawthorne Boys, fourteen and under, regional champs, area champs, sectional champs, Western State champs, to coach Carlos Aguirre and Raphael Bryant. Carlos, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Don't go away. Many of you guys know, maybe you don't, but my day job is working with combat wounded vets from Iraq and Afghanistan. And Carlos, I mean Raphael, I wanted to give him a special recognition because when these guys come back from the war and they, they come back with post-traumatic stress, with all sorts of injuries, it makes it very difficult to settle back into society. So how they, how they fall is not as important as how they rise. Carlos and a buddy were, and his team was clearing a building in Iraq when they were ambushed by the enemy, and Carlos's buddy took two bullets to the chest, and the floor collapsed, and he fell I don't know how many stories, and he broke the fall of his wounded buddy, you know, got all sorts of injuries, and comes back to, to end up coaching a team and taking them to the championship. So I have a little something, and not to take anything away from the head guy, okay? That's a head guy, so, but just for one of our guys. Be it known to all assembled here and others who behold these presents, that formal expression has been made as evidenced by this document. In recognition for your unselfish commitment and the many hours and dedication to the young people of our community, inspiring, teaching, character, respect, and honor. As a wounded combat Marine, your return to civilian life and being, and being of service to others was your way to lead a purposeful life. You joined the AUSO to continue your service to the community. We honor you for the hero that you are, but not because of, not only because of the service to your country, but because of your continued service to our children. Raphael Bryant, we are extremely proud. Your efforts are much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? And with that, thank you.
Thanks again.
So what are you going to do next year?
Still coach. No choice.
Okay, okay, guys.
Thank you, sir. Have a great day.
This presentation is about Laxit. So I'm going to ask the two representatives from, from the LA, from Lawa, Los Angeles World Airports, to come forward, please. Ms. Stephanie Sampson, Director of Communications, and Ms. Glenda Silva, the Legislative Representative, to talk about Laxit, the new way to connect to your taxi, Lyft, Opale, or Uber ride when leaving LAX. So you may, so you're going to need to know this because you may, you may be able to get to LAX, but you won't be able to get out of LAX unless you know what they're going to tell you today. So listen carefully. Thank you, ladies.
Okay. So, good evening, members of the, of the council. We want to thank Councilmember Valentine for allowing us the opportunity to come and present to you all. This is a brand-new service that we will, we will be providing in a couple of weeks, October twenty-ninth, and some of you may have already heard the news from the news, and we're here to provide additional information. And again, I'm here with my colleague Stephanie Sampson, who is a Communications Director for the Landside Access Modernization Program.
So first off, close on the pronunciation, it's LAXit. So for those of you who want to know how it's pronounced, just think L-A-X-it. So fun little play-on words there.
So just to start off...
Are you guys trying to tell us something with that? L-A-X-it?
L-A-X-it.
I can't stay in anymore, or what? Is that what it means?
So I guess I don't have to convince anyone who's already traveled out of LAX. Traffic is very challenging coming in and out of LAX. Our traffic growth, our passenger volume has increased from about sixty-three-point-seven million passengers in two thousand and twelve to about eighty-seven-point-five million just last year. We're probably going to hit about ninety million just this year alone. The traffic is really bad to the point that it backs up into the neighborhood. We're going through a fourteen-billion-dollar modernization effort. It's a major change at the airport. Major, new construction in the terminals, and with the new automated people mover coming into, into the airport, we're going to need a lot of space and area for construction. So what do we need to do? We need to reduce the traffic congestion during the height of construction. We're going to be doing a lot of curb, a lot of curb construction because we're going to have new, basically new facades along the entire facades of the terminals in order to accommodate the guideway for the APM. So what do we need to do? We need to reduce the inner curb space for about thirty percent due to construction. So the average summer day in two thousand and twenty-two will exceed the worst day of traffic in two thousand and seventeen if we do nothing today. So in order to accommodate that construction and for us to be able to work safely, along with all the guests that visit us every year, we need to make sure that we have enough room to accommodate the construction. So what is LAXit? It's a new convenient way to catch your taxi, Lyft, Opale, and Uber, which are the three TNC companies that are servicing LAX. It'll be a centralized pickup location inside the airport that is completely dedicated for the use of ride-app and taxi companies. So LAXit will be located east of Terminal One, so right in the heart of the airport, right next to Southwest Terminal One. All taxi and ride-up pickups will take place out of LAXit. Drop-offs, taxi and ride-off drop-off will remain at the terminal's doors on the upper and departure levels, so that will not change. People will be able to get dropped off right in front of the terminals when you arrive at the airport. However, when you leave, you have to take the shuttle system. LAXit provides traffic relief onto the automated people mover. So we're not fixing traffic with this new system. We just have to make sure that we allow and accommodate for the construction that we are going to be experiencing. It removes about fifteen percent of traffic from the CTA. It replaces the lost curb function, that will not be there due to construction, and it will remain open until the APM opens in two thousand and twenty-three. So the actual traffic relief will come in two thousand and twenty-three when the APM opens. This will provide a better guest experience than today and much better than expected during the CTA construction. It will allow guests to walk to the LAXit or take a frequent and fast LAXit shuttle with a dedicated guideway. So the entire dedicated guideway on the inside, the inner lanes at the, at the arrivals level, will be completely dedicated. It'll be like its own BRT, just for these shuttles and all the, the Lawa-owned shuttles. So the flyaway, the terminal connectors, and the employee shuttles will allow, be allowed in this inner curb. It will also include amenities, restrooms, food trucks, and charging stations. This is just a site layout of what the site will look like. As you can see, the little green shuttles are the branding of the shuttles. It will bring the guests in. We will have different dedicated lanes for each of the modes. In the first aisle, you will find your taxis and the Uber pool and Opale, and the following lanes, you'll have a Lyft line, and then you'll have two Uber lanes.
And one thing about how you find your ride, when you open up your app, it'll tell you where to go, and it will tell you exactly what zone to go to. So when you come into the lot, you're not looking at fifty vehicles trying to find which ride you're picking up. It'll tell you exactly which zone to go to. There's usually five cars in that zone to help you figure out quicker how to get to the vehicle.
So how do you get to LAXit? So you can travel by foot or by shuttle. We have a, and it's an easy walk from multiple terminals, from Terminal One, it's about a three-minute walk. Terminal Two, that's about an eight-minute walk. T Three, about fourteen minutes. And if you really, really want to get your steps in from Tom Bradley, you can do it roughly in about eighteen minutes. T Four, also nineteen minutes. T Five, about eighteen minutes. T Six, about eleven. And Terminal Seven and Eight is about eight minutes. And that's at a two-mile-per-hour walk. So it's a very slow walk. And the LAXit shuttle route, in order to facilitate and make this a quick access in, out of the airport for all of our guests, we're going to have dedicated shuttles at dedicated terminals. So for example, the terminal at T One and Two will only have that one pickup stop, and it will go directly into the LAXit lot. The same thing for Terminal T Three, that shuttle will pick up at Terminal Four, and then will continue on to the lot. The shuttle that's picking up at Tom Bradley International will only do a pickup there, and then will continue straight into the, into the LAXit lot. And the same thing with T Five and T Six, and then T Seven will also, that shuttle will only make that one pickup, and then you'll go straight into the lot.
So no more than fifteen minutes before you're in the lot, whether you're walking, if you go from Tom Bradley, walking, obviously a little longer, but if you're taking the shuttle, fifteen minutes or less, you're in the lot getting your ride and getting on your way.
And each shuttle will be about three to five minutes. So every three to five minutes, we'll have a shuttle available for all the passengers that are waiting. The shuttle system is completely ADA accessible, so all of our guests deserve a better experience when leaving LAX. We'll be providing customer service agents at each shuttle stop who will be assisting, who are trained to be, to provide assistance for ADA services. Shuttles are also wheelchair-accessible. They are low-floor, wide, and can easily have the hookups for, for a wheelchair. Staff will also help guests find their shuttle and load any luggage. All vision impaired guests will also be assisted by a customer service agent when boarding, and when a guest boards a shuttle, this customer service person will call ahead to the lot, and we will have assistants waiting at the LAXit lot in order to help that passenger get off and make sure, make sure that they get safely to their mode of transportation. At the lot itself, we'll have ADA-friendly restrooms for easy access and offer adult changing stations. And LAX, and the LAXit lot is completely accessible with flat surfaces, no ramps or steps, with a lot of staff that will be assisting everybody crossing and getting off the shuttles. And this is just an artist's rendering of what the shuttles are going to look like, because it's a major change at the airport, and it's going to be a completely different way of accessing, getting out of the airport. We went with this very bright green colorful branding that will help guests easily identify the shuttles so they can get on with ease.
There will be extensive signage throughout the terminal area baggage claim on the walkways leading to the new lot. Anywhere you go, there will be bright green signage pointing you in the right direction. And we will have about a hundred and forty members of our eye-care crew, which come from the South Bay workforce, board to help assist people getting on and off the shuttles and helping with wayfinding.
So this rendering just basically shows how we're going to be modifying the current inner roadway existing as at the top-left corner. Right now, we have about three travel lanes, the curb lane, and then the outer curb, and then the commercial pickup lane, which is basically the outer curb, the, the outer lanes of the central terminal area. What we're proposing is completely eliminating all the traffic that's not Lawa, a Lawa-operated vehicle, out to the outer lanes, and making this basically a shuttle-only roadway to facilitate the movement of the shuttles more safely and a lot quicker to be able to get all of our guests to the LAXit lot. We've done a lot of extensive changes at the airport in order to make it more pedestrian-friendly since we're going to be, there's going to be a few guests who are going to be able to walk or want to walk. And so we've widened a lot of the curbs. The outer curb sidewalk has been extended to about fourteen feet to be able to accommodate the new, the amount of folks that are going to be taking the outer curb in order to be picked up as a, you know, with, like, your loved one comes to pick you up. In areas where we're going to have construction locations, we're, it's still going to be one dedicated lane for the, for the shuttle, but however, there are going to be some, you know, construction areas that are not going to be conducive for pedestrians because we're going to be doing construction. construction in those, in front of the terminals.
Sorry, you have one more minute.
Okay. So this is just to show you some of the LAXIT branding and the signage that we're going to be using at the arrival and departure screens. This is some of the signage that we're going to be using, the wayfinding signage for folks who are interested in walking, bright green all over the airport. We'll also be having some social and paid media in order to, you know, continue doing the outreach for this, for this new process. We're also going to do the actual ride app communications. So like Stephanie mentioned earlier, so once you call your Uber or Lyft, their actual app will give you specific instructions on how and where to go and how to, how to, you know, connect with your driver. And here are just some renderings of what the lot's going to look like. It's very nice, it's purpose-built, it's a brand-new facility, and again, it's right next to Southwest Terminal 1.
Can we do questions? Because yeah, we're already kind of short on time.
And we also, we also have a fact sheet, we left several out front for the public, but we also have fact sheets for the city council.
Hi, thank you for being here. So I just wanted to make sure, all taxis and all rideshare operations are going to be confined to LAXIT? I got a couple more.
Pickup only.
Pickup only?
Pickup only.
If you're leaving the airport.
Yes.
So if you're getting to the airport, you're still being dropped off in front of the terminal.
Okay. Have you quantified how much traffic is due to the taxis and the rideshare operations? How much, what's the percentage of relief that we're going to get from having this LAXIT program? You have to have quantified it.
Yeah, the taxi, Uber, and Lyft take up about 25% of our overall traffic. By removing pickup only, we're removing 15% of our overall traffic per day, which is about 15,000 vehicles a day.
Okay. And how will you be able to enforce this?
Great question. We have lots of safety and security officers who will be there to assist and make sure that no one can go where they're not supposed to go. The inner curb will be closed, so there will be no access point. Currently, if you're driving into the CTA terminal area, there's that little cut-in where you can go into the inner roadway. We are closing the majority of those, so no cars can cut in. If there is an Uber or Lyft or taxi operator who is seen picking up a passenger curbside, they can be cited and they can lose their license.
Will I still be able to pick up my parents if they come and drop them off?
Yes, yes, you will be. The only difference is you would have to do it out of the outer curb.
Or you can pick up on the upper level as well.
It'll be safe?
It'll be safe.
Thank you so much for coming. That was very helpful. So I have a question about a taxi. Traditionally, I would take a taxi. So do you have to have an app in order to take a taxi out of the airport now?
No, no, no. It'll be similar to like a regular taxi stand, so you'll just be able to walk up to the next waiting taxi there.
But it will be at the same location, though?
Yes, yes, and I can go back to the runway.
You'll have taxi stands there, which don't require you to have an app in order to use them?
Yes, taxis will be staged, so they'll be in their taxi holding lot right down the street. And then once, you know, they start going through the taxis currently in the lot, they'll call the next batch to come in and be queued.
And they're in the, they're going to be in that first row right when you exit the shuttles.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, ladies. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
And we'll leave these guests outside.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last presentation. All right, thank you, thank you for the presentations. Let's move on. Where are we at? We're at 6:40, 6:57. So let's move on to the next item. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Sure. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing board, governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
All right. Wow, all right. Pat Don, no, I'm going to ask, do I have former council member Michelin here still? Oh, come on up. Do you want to speak to the council? Okay, yeah, we're going to give him the honor of going first. We have, I want to introduce to you, reintroduce, we all know who he is, former council member Nilo Michelin, who is now a board trustee for El Camino College. Welcome, let's give him a round of applause for all the good things he's doing.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. It was a great honor to serve with you up there. And my name is Nilo Michelin. I'm on the El Camino Board of Trustees. I'd like to give a report to the Hawthorne community about some future and past events. I'm going to start with the future events. We would like to invite everybody to the grand opening of our Student Services Building, and that's going to be on Friday, November 1st, at 3:00 PM. It's a state-of-the-art building, it's going to help El Camino students enroll in college. We're very excited about this. On Saturday, November 16th, at 1:00 PM, at our football stadium, we will honor the legendary Coach Featherstone by naming him, naming the field after him, so it's going to be called the Featherstone Field. Coach Featherstone coached for 31 seasons. He had the national championship in 1987, state championship in 2006, and won 11 conference championships. We would also like to invite everybody to our State of the College event. Hawthorne has its State of the City event, and we started our State of the College event last year. We're going to have our second one, and that's going to be on Friday, November 15th, at 11:30 AM. So when we talk about the college, when we're talking about technology, the focus is going to be on design and digital media, so we're very excited about that. Just want to talk about some past events. We had the Men of Color Conference, which brought community college students from all over the state to give them strategy for success. So we want to thank city clerk Paul Jimenez, who's a big part of that, putting that together. So thank you very much. We had a luncheon for our Promise Program. We're very proud of our Promise Program. It guarantees El Camino students that qualify two years of free college, and a lot of those students are from Hawthorne. So we just had a luncheon about that. And the El Camino Foundation had their Halloween Ball last Sunday, and we're proud to report that it was a big success. We earned over $200,000 from that event and from the luncheon. So if you want to make a donation for this great cause, please make a donation to the El Camino Foundation. They're always looking for, they're always looking for donations. So thank you very much. We, it's an honor to have a partnership with you. We look forward to seeing you at these events. I only have one copy of these flyers, so I'll give it to the city clerk. So anybody that wants information, please get copies from the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Alaric Simon, Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club.
Say good evening to the mayor, city council, everybody assembled. Just want to take the opportunity to thank you on behalf of the Hawthorne Imperial Lions Club for allowing us to come bring the screening to the city. And I was an actual recipient of the glasses, and it made a big difference. I had a pair that I needed changed, and the prescription was so close, I was able to take my previous pair of glasses and swap these on, same distance. It's just like within the, like a .5 percentage point. They don't just dial it in, but they get very close to whatever your prescription is. It's just amazing. I'm here to present because we're having a Christmas tree fundraiser, and I have some flyers out in front. So it's basically a pre-Christmas tree sale. You can preorder your Christmas tree, and then on December 7th, we'll have a staging lot where you can pick it up or can have it delivered. And so we're here effectively trying to continue to do more work in the community. So we have, we also in the past did like a vision screening that we do for the little kids from six months old to six years old to catch pre-vision screen, you know, issues. And we're going to be definitely really active at doing some diabetes awareness, because I've been a sufferer for diabetes for like 24 years. So we want to be able to start getting more knowledge in some seminars and some things in the city to start giving people the power to make better decisions and know what to do. So I just want to thank you for allowing me to continue to work and serve the city. Thank you.
Pat Donaldson, Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor for Timon City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. I just want to make a couple of quick announcements, and then I want to introduce you to some new chamber members. We're going to have our Halloween mixer. It's called the Freaks Come Out at Night, and it's going to be at the courtyard, Marriott across the street, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Is that a proper name for a mixer from Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce?
Well, the board picked that name.
Kind of funky.
I can blame it on the board. I never thought of that. And, oh, and the chief, the Chief Ishi's coming as, guess what?
A freak?
No, yeah.
Sorry, chief.
You know I had to do that. Okay, and that's going to be this Thursday, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. There'll be food, all kinds of food. There'll be 50/50 drawing, there'll be $50 for the most original, $50 for the scariest. So all come, come dressed up if you like. And also, we have different mayors from different cities that are going to be coming also, so I hope, Mayor, you'll be here, be there. Okay, Thanksgiving, we'll be giving out the turkeys November 22nd at 1:00 PM at Hawthorne Auto Square. And December 20th, we'll be giving out turkeys and toys at the Memorial Center, December 20th, at 3:00 PM. Now, I would like to introduce three different chamber members. One is from Pre-America Financial Services. Okay, come on up. And this is your plaque. And if you'd like to give your name and tell the city council in one minute what you're about, because I got two more.
My name is Yuraj Mapadna. I'm a resident at Hawthorne. I've been here almost 10 years, and I'm in, with Pre-America Financial Services. And I found out there is no office in Hawthorne. So I joined with the chamber, and I'm going to work with them. And eventually, my goal is to have my own office within the next six to 12 months in Hawthorne. So that's my goal. Thank you.
And Kimberly with New York Life. And then next will be Dolly. And here is her plaque, and she's going to give her name and a minute of what she's about.
Hi, my name is Kim. I am with the company of New York Life. It's the same field industry, financial services. So it's full-service financial firm when it comes to retirement, college funding, life insurance, and mortgage protection. Full service, and we've been open for 175 years. So I've been living here in Hawthorne since three years old. So my ultimate goal is as well to serve my community in that sense. So thank you.
Okay, and then we have Dolly from Pro-Life Hair Design. And here is her plaque, and she's a new member of the chamber, and you want to give your name and give a minute of what you're about, please? Yes.
Hi, I'm Dolly. I am proprietor of Prolific Hair Designers here in the city of Hawthorne on Dodie and El Segundo. This is Judith, she's one of my colleagues. I am not a public speaker. We specialize in all types of hair care. Our services include, but not limited to, cuts, color, extensions, braiding, hair locking, and more. We also offer classes in braiding and wig making, and our, and our cuts are discounted on Tuesdays from 1 to 5. Our cuts are $10 on Tuesdays. We also sell hair care products in Avon. In the past, we've participated in numerous community events, one being the Hawthorne Business Expo, which we will be participating again in January. We also welcome services, I'm sorry. We welcome and service everyone, and we brought a few goodie bags for the people here.
Question, how do you enjoy being in the city of Hawthorne?
I used to live in the city of Hawthorne, but I really like it. I really like it.
And how do you feel opening a shop in the city you used to live in?
I love it. I love the location that we chose. Actually, my father chose the location, but I love the location. We could see everything from there. It's easy access, we're right across the street from the Hawthorne Community Center, and business is good there.
Well, thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Commissioner Erminia Balboa, Park and Rec Commission, please, art show.
Good evening, Erminia Balboa, 4535 West 133rd Street in Hawthorne. And I'm a commissioner with the Park and Rec and Fine Arts Commission, and we're having our third art show this year. We had two, two years ago, I mean, a few years ago, one last year, and we included the Hawthorne School Districts, but this year, we're including all the schools in the city, public and private. We invited everybody to participate, and it's going to take place on November 7, Thursday, November 7, from 6 to 8 at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. It's free to the public, and all friends and family members of the artist are encouraged to attend. Presented by young artists who live, who live in Hawthorne community, who are currently in grade K through 12, and will display their creative works of art, using different types of media, and performing arts also. Then it's everybody invited, and we hope you can make it. Thank you.
Neil Gaffney, with regards to the Veterans Commission?
Council Mayor Neil Gaffney, 13032 Union Avenue in Hawthorne. I come to you tonight as a resident, as the founding chair of the Veteran Commission, and certainly as the secretary, although I'm not coming in any city capacity. I am very proud of what the, what the council has done in donating land for veteran housing. You've made the right decision, there is no wrong decision going forward. But you have an opportunity to get some input and feedback tonight based upon Veteran Commission input that was provided yesterday regarding choices, uses, and utilization of that piece of land. You know well that the commission, nearly five years old now, has achieved great respect within the county of LA, fair amount of notoriety. You're on the cusp of greatness as a city. Don't succumb to NIMBYism. Don't let anything sway you from the direction you're going, and take some of the input from the various subject matter experts that have provided input to this idea on how you will use that housing. So I'm very proud of the, of the city in this, proud of being a veteran, and just hats off to you as council members. Thank you.
Sarah Carreras, Sarah Carreras. Parking Markings in Ramona Neighborhood? Which I think is something that I talked about and is already promoted, so let's see if it's the same thing.
Oh, sorry, it already is. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to request paint markings to differentiate multiple parking spots on streets with parking on only one side in the Ramona neighborhood. I don't know if that's a little bit...
We, we have the system already. I've been promoting it, I've mentioned it like two, three times, so we have something in place. If you talk to our city manager, he will give you the information. We already have it. The person who lives, this is, has to be quick, right, on my part? The person who lives in front of that spot is the person who has to request it. 25 bucks, the city goes up, goes out there and goes and paints it. So the person who lives immediately in front of that parking space needs to request it. Well, if we can get some forms to you tomorrow, you can distribute it to all your neighbors.
Okay. May I ask a question?
It has to be super brief, because we're not really supposed to answer questions, but go ahead.
I'm sorry. How does, how does it work with parking on only one side of the street? Is it, because if you can only request for your own, right in front of your house, and how does it work for the person who lives on the other side?
On the other side, parking is prohibited, so they don't have to worry about.
Yeah.
And please contact engineering. Tomorrow, contact engineering, they will advise you and they have the proper forms.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
And we've looked at that, ma'am, but there's just, the width of the streets don't allow us to park on both sides, because it's an engineering limitation.
Okay, thank you.
Right, parking on both sides so that we could have more parking, right? But you just can't because it's just too narrow. It's not wide enough, I mean, but...
That's why I would suggest just kind of standardizing it on the streets with only one side, because it's hard, because the other side of the street, they don't really have a say in their own parking spots, and so, thank you very much.
Is that Akbar? Akbar, can you talk to her? Just advise her what she needs to do? Get her, get her set up, please? Or Alan, whoever the individual, I just don't want her to go away. Or Alan, whoever the individual, I just don't want her to go away, and the information doesn't get to her, okay? Thank you, ma'am. Marlon Savio.
Hi. Evening, City Council. I'm gonna say, sitting in here, I've heard a lot of great things about Hawthorne. And quite frankly, when I moved here, I would not disagree with a single thing. When I moved into my unit in March, into affordable housing, I was homeless for a year prior to that. And I wound up getting a job, getting a place, and it was all here in Hawthorne, and I was very grateful for that. However, my experience did change when dealing with the Housing Department. And I don't know if anyone's aware, but it was mold found in my unit, and it has taken seven months before I had any response. And then I've been on the streets for, well, I've been in hotels for the last two weeks. I'm gonna go into more detail, but I just want to make sure that this doesn't happen to other people. If other people who are in this situation, especially under the housing, have black mold, or see black mold, or any kind of mold, if you're coughing, wheezing, if your nose, your kids' noses are bleeding, if their skin is having rashes, if they're having joint pain. I now have asthma, I've been issued a aspirator, which I've never had, I'm forty-two years old, and I've never had an asthma issue. So, it's real, the symptoms are real, and they're very subtle, but they are persistent, and they get worse. Besides that is, when I mentioned it, my situation turned bad because of the response I received from the office. I won't go into detail of that, but I know that also extenuated the circumstances and extended my suffering, and those who came to my home. And lastly, it seems like since I've been out of the unit, I'm, like I said, I'm forty-two years old, I've been a police car twice this month alone. And I feel like I've been in a new subgroup, so I just kind of want that to stop. I just want the issue fixed, and I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard when it comes to this issue, because I know other homes that have children in it, elderly, disabled, things where people can't get away, and don't notice things, and don't have the wherewithal to come to your meeting and speak. So, I just speak on their behalf and hope that you'll listen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, sir, I have some questions for you, may I ask you some questions? My name is Olivia Valentine, I'm the mayor pro temp.
My pleasure, Marlon Savio, I don't know if I introduced myself.
Thank you. So, just have a few questions for you. So, when you moved in, did you ever tell anyone that you had children living with you?
Yes, they're on my lease.
Okay, and...
And I did not have children, they were in my visitation in custody, and it was a battle between them, so I wanted to make sure.
But they're your children?
Absolutely.
Are they suffering from...
They are not, because they have not been able to come, and they have not been there, so that, on the occasions that I did have them, so that's been fortunate.
They have not been able to come, do they live with you?
They live with their mother.
Okay, but you told the Housing Director that they live with you, isn't that true, correct?
They have visitations, so they have every right to be on my lease and visit my home at any time. That means if my visitation or my custody changes, if I get that, and I get them through the school year, I don't have to update my lease, they're there. It's their home, it's my home, it belongs to my children.
Okay, and what are their names?
Excuse me, what is your husband's name, ma'am? What is your children's name, that's irrelevant to my situation.
No, it's not, what are their names? Your children's names, what are they?
I have a daughter named Jabreen, a son named Marlon, and a son named George.
And how old are they?
Ten, twelve, eleven, twelve, and thirteen now, they all have birthdays in the last six weeks, so. And two of them birthday in the same, they're the same age for a few weeks.
Do they go to school in Hawthorne?
No, they do not, I would like that, actually, I like there's parks nearby. I like that I can take them, my son wanted to go fishing, I like that that can take him over to Redondo, and they'll get a free license, because I'm a resident. They're very, I'm not upset with the city at all, I really see the benefit in it, and I really want to bring my children down here, have them take a bus for the first time, ride the metro into Staples. I have a lot of dreams and visions that I have for Hawthorne, the beach being down the street, the airport, I don't know, LAX. You know, there's just a lot about the city, because this is the first time I've lived down in the Bay. I've been on the other side in those valleys, and this is the first time I've been in the big city here, and I love everything about it, except this issue became a very hard issue, and it infected my health, and I don't want that to affect. Because while I was out in a hotel, I had to have a meeting with CPS. Just a regular kind of thing, but I couldn't do it in my home, so she could see where I live, because I'm in this hotel, because of mold for the soul. That's just kind of the issue that I have.
Well, before you moved out because of the mold, were you paying rent?
Why is that? Well, no, I was not paying rent, see, there's a warranty of affordability. See, when your unit is not, by the ordinance, a unit that's rentable, you're illegally renting a unit. So, when I had sewage leaking from my ceiling downstairs into my carpet, and my heater never worked when I moved in there, that is technically two things, that means this place is not a place, and you cannot, as a landlord, demand or accept rent for a unit that's technically not a rentable unit.
Well, when was the last time that you did pay rent?
I paid rent in April, when I reported the black mold, and then the following month in May, as I was getting sick, I missed some hours, and my shit, my rent became short. So, I called them, and I told them I paid seven hundred, and they didn't want to take the partial payment. So, from April to May, suddenly, I was unable to get the support that I needed, just like I did when I moved in. And then from May, I was told, we're not gonna check any kind of mold until you pay your rent. I told the lady I was illegal, but she said it to me and repeated to me, and repeated it a couple of weeks ago down the street to another neighbor, and she does have four kids, elderly, and all that good stuff in her home, and a whole lot more mold than I do, I think. But nonetheless, that's the issue with that, I mean, the mold has been an issue, and whether I pay rent or not, I'm living in a unit, and I'm sick. My healthcare has gone up, and so is that...
Let me ask you a last question, how long you in the apartment, how long you live there?
Oh, wait, wait, just listen.
I haven't finished.
That'll be the next one.
Does anyone else feel like they're picking on me? I came here to make a statement, and I feel like you're asking me about my children, my personal life. I just came here to bring some awareness to mold in people's units, and you're asking me questions about, did I pay rent? And did I do this? That's called political repression, it's when they make you be internally repressed, where you don't say anything and you give up. I wanted to avoid expressing the law of coercive responsiveness, which is a political response. But I was hoping that I can get on the good side, and just kind of go on a good foot, and hope that you want to take the opportunity to just say, "Sir, we're working on it, and we'll correct you."
We are working on it.
But now you want to pick on me, and you want to reach into my life, and ask me...
We're just trying to get some information.
None of that is relevant.
Okay.
My health is more important than your rent being paid to affordable housing.
Who have you talked to in the Housing Department?
I've talked to everybody, you know who's in the Housing Department.
Who have you talked to?
It is Kimberly Mack, Octavio, what's that other lady, Catherine, it's the main people. Don't act like you don't know who they are, there's three people in there.
Quiet in the audience, please. We need you quiet.
Now, I came here in peace, and you're badgering me, Madam Valentine, I don't understand why...
I'm not trying to badger you, I'm just trying to get some information.
Well, you're asking me, you didn't answer a single question about, excuse me, sir, what is your wife's name and your children?
Okay, let's move on.
What about your grandchildren? Anybody else want to give their lives, their family tree here, so that Ms. Olivia can badger you? When you just come to make a simple statement, and you say that you come in peace.
Just trying to get some information, sir, sorry, sorry if you felt...
In the beginning, you said that you'll get that information later.
Trying to get some information, sir, we're not trying to badger you.
And I find that to be very...
All right.
That's port of coram.
Thank you.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Tess Banks? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I just didn't know who this was. UCLA VA Veteran Family Wellness Center.
Yeah, I don't know if I can move this at all.
Okay.
Hello, thank you, council members. My name is Tess Banco, I've experienced homelessness. I was raised on government aid. Wanting to give back, I served as an engineer in the Marine Corps. I experienced a spinal injury that ended my career, and was diagnosed with PTSD due to military sexual trauma. But let's talk about the next chapter, which was forging a new path. Using my GI Bill, I became a master of social work and public administration. I'm now a Veteran Commissioner for Third District County Supervisor Sheila Kewell. I'm the vice chair of the American Legion Polisades Post Two Eighty-three. I direct the UCLA VA Veteran Family Wellness Center, which is a one-of-a-kind center on the West Los Angeles VA campus. And I'm also the single mother to a six-year-old, Hunter Rose, who's with us. I just wanted to speak on behalf of the RFP for the quarterly property. As you know, veterans are at a disproportionately high risk of homelessness. While they represent only seven percent of the general public, they account for thirteen percent of the total unsheltered population in the United States. A veteran is twice as likely to have housing instability as any other citizen in the United States, and here in Los Angeles, that is no exception. I think we all have seen the statistics, and we know what they are. But Los Angeles County is home to the largest population of veterans and families in the nation. In Los Angeles County alone, though, there are almost four hundred, I mean, sorry, four thousand homeless veterans and families, according to the twenty-nineteen Greater Los Angeles Homeless Count. And all of those are not going to be able to be sheltered on the West Los Angeles VA campus, unfortunately, they're trying, but there's not enough housing there. So, the veteran family community needs a caring community response. The support is invaluable to a group of people like me, who have a lot to offer to our communities. And in your community here in Hawthorne, there's lots of city benefits, there are economic impacts. When veterans come to work in your city, they are capable of producing so much. And there's also the opportunity for innovation, you have so many businesses here that are hiring veterans, particularly in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, which I think would benefit the community. So, clear needs, housing for families, single-parent households, and caregivers. A lot of people will think, you know, OEF, OFE veterans, that's the next frontier, but I don't think a lot of people understand that there's a graying going on in America, and that includes Vietnam veterans. So, you have a lot of veterans and their caregivers who are becoming displaced. You have single-parent households, not only male, but female. So, in the RFP, I would definitely advocate not just for casting a wide net for just, you know, OEF, OFE veterans, or veterans in general. What might happen is that you're gonna get service providers who only serve male veterans, and that's something that we've seen here in Los Angeles County, and what's happening on the West Los Angeles VA campus. So, definitely would recommend hiring someone to fulfill the RFP that is not only potentially a developer, but also a service provider. So, thank you again for allowing me to come and speak a little bit on behalf, and thank you for building housing for veterans, and hopefully, veterans and families.
Thank you, ma'am.
One brief question.
One brief question, do you have your suggestions in writing that you could provide to the council?
I do, I made a presentation, so is that, will that work, or do you want it a white paper?
Whatever you have on paper.
So, where do I send that?
To our city manager, he'll give you the information, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for visiting us and coming.
And thank you for your service, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Where are we at? Anybody else wishing to address the council? And again, one more reminder, folks, when somebody's speaking up here, we need the audience members to respect people who are speaking. If you disagree with them, we need you to hold your peace, okay? Or else, we will have you removed.
Hi, Lucy Ravage, One Thirty-third Street in Ramona, Truck. I just wanted to thank you for all that you do, and also especially thank the Planning Department, who put on a short-term rental workshop last week, addressing the issue of short-term rentals being banned. Starting, I mean, it has been, it came to their attention that they are not allowed, and will not be allowed as of January first. But they are working with the Planning Commission, who went over different advisable aspects for the first draft of the ordinance amendment to allow short-term rentals. They did listen to several hosts and took into consideration our concerns. As we mentioned at the meeting, short-term rental hosts try to always keep and maintain their property's interior as well as exterior. And when we, you know, have fresh paint and nice landscaping, it often improves the neighborhood, and neighbors like to also beautify their neighborhood. Also, guests often use Uber or Lyft, and if they do rent a car, they only rent one car, thus not impacting or actually decreasing the amount of parking issues we have. And I just wanted to let you know, I still have my calendar off for the next year, but we are looking forward to possibly... The Planning Commission is planning on presenting an agendized thing in December, so you can all hear the proposed amendment to the ordinances. Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Good evening, City Council. Lethell Williams, a proud resident here in the city of Hawthorne. It was a wonderful event at the Memorial Center, thank you. The chicken was delicious and very tasteful, everything was of abundance. However, it is, something just really happened, really sad here, and our city attorney didn't intervene. It was arrogance for the gentleman that just walked out of here, in his really time of being displaced, or whatever. Come on, come on. And it has been said that a lot at the meetings, forgive me, at the meetings, short meetings, short meetings, that somebody done gave up interests in our community, because our chamber should be filled with developers, should be filled with people that's interested, coming here with franchises, firms, sitting in these audience. It's not, it's not too late, election is coming, you've got someone, or some people, bodies, that have been here for so long. More should have been set within their time of being here on this council. Heaven, please, don't give up on this city. There is a lot of stuff that need developing. Mi casa, down here by Starbucks, how long? Imperial furniture, how long? Come on, don't give up on this city. For those that it's not time for you to go out, and some have just been appointed to come in. It's a wonderful thing that you fill this chamber today. Fill it with developers and franchises that want to come and set foundation here for this community. It is important. The Taste of Soul, I must say, was a big hit. I saw a lot of people from Hawthorne with a booth, businesses ready to flourish. I thank Miss Bee's, Eminem Soul Food, I thank the new cafe, we need bigger. Let's rise above, rise above. My heart goes out to the gentleman that left out of here, for whatever his dismay was, it's a disgrace. It's a disgrace for anybody sitting on this chamber asking somebody's child, the name of their child? The devil is alive, and I have mercy on that person, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Council, my name is Darlene Love, I live in Holly Park at Two Oh Three Wasana and Sixteenth Street. Thank you for sending someone up there to strike the street, but I'm not really happy because crossing that outside, which is One Hundred and Sixteenth going towards Vanessa, that street is cracking. I've seen better work up there, I'm not down on the guys that's doing it. But you know, that's not a bad-looking neighborhood, so when you send those guys up there, be sure that they, be sure that the street can look as well as the striping. But thank you, I know you're a great man, and you do all you can for the city, and I thank all you city people, because it's not easy sometimes when you hear people say, "You at City Hall really don't know what to do." But thank you so much for doing that.
You are very welcome, Mrs. Love. You know I do the best I can for you.
Oh, I know you do.
I have a lot of respect for you. You know, Vanessa is LA County, we still went there and put the crosswalk there, because One Sixteen had a crosswalk.
Yes, but no, I'm talking about our side of the street.
One Sixteen?
Yeah.
You have my promise, we put it in the next project for paving.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Thanks again.
Anybody else? If not, I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, please, sir?
Yes, you may. Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item eight, approval of city council minutes for the regular meeting of October eighth, twenty nineteen. Item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item ten, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number one-eight-four-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne supporting the city's partnership with AARP, California's Age Friendly Community for Adoption.
I'd like to pull number twelve.
Okay, I move all other items except twelve? It's been seconded, moved and seconded? Please vote.
The vote reflects Mayor and City Council voting yes.
I just want to make a comment about the Resolution Eighty-One Forty-four. By joining this network and becoming an age-friendly city, Hawthorne affirms its commitment to becoming more age-friendly. The city of Hawthorne has a population of seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven residents, or nine percent who could benefit from Hawthorne being an age-friendly city. The World Health Organization... The World Health Organization and AARP have developed eight domains in advancing public and aging policy goals of improving the health and quality of life for older people. I just want to mention a couple of them, because I think they're really important for us. One, community support and health services, access to home care services, clinics, programs to support active aging, physical, which consists of physical exercise and health habits. That's one. Housing, a wide range of housing options, promoting aging in place and other home modification programs, housing that is accessible to transportation, and community health services. It's really important that we get on board and stay on board. The population of the United States is aging, and so is the population of Hawthorne, and we need to have as many, as many services as possible to benefit people in their, in their senior years. We also have plans to conduct a senior needs assessment for our older residents, and we will develop a community-wide action plan based on the findings of the assessment. So I ask you all to stay tuned and provide your input, so that we can have as many voices as possible to say what you need for the benefit of seniors. And with that, I'd like to move Resolution 12, 8144.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Ordinances.
Did I miss an ordinance? I am so sorry. Oh my God, I missed yours. No, I didn't do it on purpose.
Oh, mine? Does smoking, I don't smoke.
I'll go ahead. Ordinance Number 2191, second reading. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Section 8.48.010, Regulation of Smoking in City-Owned Facilities, Definitions to the Hawthorne Municipal Code relating to the Regulation of Smoking in City-Owned Facilities for Adoption.
Make the motion.
Second.
Question. Well, as a clarification, so through the city attorney. So this ordinance, right, does not include those who have prescribed marijuana smoking, right?
No, it doesn't include that.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item 15, please.
Ordinance Number 2191, first reading. In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending Chapter 8.20, Public Nuisances of Title 8, Health and Safety of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, Providing that specified conditions accompanied by prolonged vacancies in a residential or commercial building constitutes a condition of public nuisance in making related changes to definitions and enforcement for introduction.
I move to introduce. Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have Items 17 and 18 for approval tonight.
I make the motion? Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
So that was both 17 and 18, right? Okay, I will now recess the city council meeting and call to order the housing authority. Item Number 20, can you please read that?
Yeah, releasing a request for proposals for the sale of the 14115 Quarterly Parcel, APN 4051 030902, for development of an 18-unit and affordable veterans' rental housing project.
I move. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
I will now recess the housing authority meeting and call back to order the city council meeting. Is Jesse Vialpando here? Jesse, how's it going? Come on up. Well, we have a vacancy on the youth commission, and out of all the applications, I think we received 10 applications. 10? I don't know, like, it was like nine or something. And we, I would like to nominate Jesse Vialpando to the youth commission.
Second.
Let's, let's vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Okay, I'd like to swear you in, so if you could, I'm going to go over there, and I'm going to do the oath. Okay, just so you can get started right away, okay? All right. Please, please raise your right hand, and after I, and after I say, just repeat your name.
Okay.
I?
I, Jesse Vialpando.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear?
That I will bear.
True faith and allegiance?
Truth, space, and allegiance?
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California?
That I take, that I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion?
And that I will well and faithfully?
And I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter? Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want you to say what you're going to do.
The mayor wanted me to tell you what my plans were. So first of all, I would like to thank the city council and the mayor for allowing me this opportunity to address some tonight. My name is Jesse Vialpando. I am currently serving on the Board of Directors for two, two boards. One is the Salvation Army in the San Fernando Valley, where I serve as the secretary, and as well, I serve on the Board of the Business and Industry Council for Emergency Planning and Preparance. I'm looking forward to serving on the Hawthorne Youth Commission to ensure that, to ensure that the Hawthorne Youth Commission is well-led and well-organized. I'm very excited to ensure that the, the youth of Hawthorne are knowledgeable of all the resources and opportunities that are available to them. Again, I would like to thank the city council for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to serve the community of Hawthorne. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for stepping up and offering yourself to the community in this manner, and I see, I see that you're excited, so you have a good group of people to work with, so congratulations once again.
Thank you very much.
All right, so... Do I have any? This is going real quick. Okay, item number, discussion, do we have any discussion items?
Yeah. You got this. 23.
All right, item number 23. This is a discussion item that calls for a vote. Do we have, are we allowed to vote with, on items that are within the?
No, no vote today.
There's no votes that are allowed under discussion items, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
No vote.
All right, so there's no votes, just discussion purely?
I'm going to bring it up.
Go ahead, council member.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there will be no vote, because the following meeting, we will have a, a public hearing about it, okay? Because I don't want us to make the decision. I want the public to make the decision. As you know, you know, every year, we have eight slots for the fireworks stands, right? We got three that is grandfathered in, you know, the two VFW and the Winter Warriors of America. And we got five that is a lottery process. But these past, you know, years, the organization that's been selected by the lottery, the five of them, have not been making the money or the profit that the, the firework company, company tells us we're going, we're going to do. One of the things is the locations. Location now has become tremendously expensive, and then as your organization have to pay 50% of that lease agreement that the firework company will obtain with the property owner. And some of these locations are pretty bad. So the organization has not been making money, not 50%, not 30%. Even if we made 20%, it will be like a miracle. So, for example, this year, the lottery make no money. The Monito Giants Improv need make no money. The South Bay University Charlotte Development Center, the castle, made a little bit of money. So none of these organizations are making the money, and we had to work seven-day slavery for these companies, because they have to charge us for everything, for delivery, for the flyers, you know, for everything, even for the flags, even for the fire extinguisher. So at the end, if you end up with $1,000 or $2,000, you're going to, you know, say, thank you, Jesus. So what I'm suggesting is to decrease the numbers of slots. So let's, for example, only allow, instead of five, maybe three organizations, plus the three from the veterans. So there will be like six slots, for example, okay? So that will give a better chance, not just for the firework company to go negotiate the property, the location, but also to give the organization, the nonprofit, a better chance to make a little bit more money. Because five of these, five of these organizations that goes and compete, so it statistically shows that they're not making money, okay? So that is where I'm proposing to reduce the number of the slots of the competition ones, the ones that is draw by lottery. So, but I asked Russell, our city attorney, that I didn't want us to make the decision. I want us to put it out there for the next meeting, we'll have a part, a public hearing, that the organization and the people, and even maybe the firework company would come to say their piece, if they agree or disagree, but I think is the best, because I've been doing this firework for 25 years. So I know exactly how I got down, up and down, and now it's down, and we're just not making enough money for the nonprofits, so thank you.
I have a comment, you know, and you know I love you, man. You know I love you, dude. But I'm going to say it in terms of, like, I don't know, it's not a parable, it's a dilemma here. Because say, I'm, I'm a father and a, I'm a father and I have like about eight kids, you know? And I love them all.
You're a father?
Let's say, for example, I'm a father and eight kids, but you know, I just, you know, my house isn't big enough, but I love them all. Well, I'm going to have to select two of them that I got to have to kick out into the street, and it's going to have no, no house at all. So that's the thing, so now we're saying that's, now guaranteed that there's going to be two less nonprofits that are going to make, guaranteed not make, have an opportunity to make any money at all. So I think the problem might be different. Oh, and then on top of that, if we're going to have like a discussion, public hearing, well, the, what if some of those nonprofits that are not keen to have been here or heard about the meeting, they might not be represented? Of course, the veterans groups and the ones that are grandfathered in, and the ones that have always been here are always going to be present and say, well, yeah, of course, let's bring it down. But what, it's going to be guaranteed, the, you know, there's going to be a majority that's going to say, yeah, but... So no, I mean, I'm posing that, and, and please, you know, address the counter.
Let me address that, okay? I understand your rationalization about that, but just think about that those organizations going to compete. So, so you can have five applicant or six applicants. Because see, last year, for this year, for example, there was five applicants, so they didn't need to go to a lottery process. But let's say that you have like eight organizations wants to compete. So they all go to on this pool, and then we draw the numbers, so it's a lottery. So if they come up, like three organizations comes up, like the Lions, the Rotary, the Kiwanis, they will be allowed at least to profit something that year. Then the following year, they, they not qualified. Hold on, hold on, I'm not, they're not qualified to apply. So you giving those other people a chance the following year to make a little bit more money if they're all of them in five location are competing among themselves to get the families, your, you know, families and, and the people that can buy the fireworks, and then they're not making money. And then, and then, you know, we have even the rent a truck, go deliver the fireworks. And then you got there, when they run up the sheet, you, you're in deficit. So that is where I'm thinking is giving them a chance to guarantee some profit this, for the first year, and then the following year, they don't, they don't qualify. So then you got three more people following year to be able to qualify and maybe make some, a little bit of money. Does that make myself clear?
Well, then, then I guess, no, no, I'm still going with this guy right here. Well, let's, are we, so then, we're saying we're grandfathering like two or three of them. Okay, I know, I know, so, you know, but that's my logic. So what, are we saying that two, three, or four, two or three groups are more important than all the rest of the nonprofits, and they're always going to be guaranteed a slot? I mean, the other ones are not at the same, you know, importance, level, prominence, or what are we talking about here?
It's been that for a long time, because remember, the veteran organizations, especially the VMW post 2075 and the post 314, has, it was grandfathered, I think, even before I was born. And then we include the...
It was more of a rhetorical thing.
Yeah, and, and about, maybe about 15 years ago. Yeah, so, but I, believe it or not, is, the reason I brought this up, not because, just because of Alex Montero, is because I, I know, I know the Lions, I know the Kiwanis, I know the Rotary, I know the Women's Club, I know all these organizations that has been doing the firework, and we've been talking about ourselves, how, you know, this firework actually is not working for the benefit of, of the nonprofit.
I mean, look, about five or six, five or six years ago, seven years ago, I publicly stated, I think we should just do away with the whole fireworks thing, because nobody's making money. It seems more like, like an endless money pit. I said that. And I guess, I have a, I have a colleague here that agrees with that.
I would vote for that.
Who wants to go follow up on that? You want to go?
No, Ms. Valentine.
Well, I, I wasn't going to necessarily follow up on that, because I also was of the opinion that we probably should do away with the fireworks altogether, but that's another discussion. My question would be, how do you know that if you reduce the number of, of participants, that you're going to increase the number, increase the amount of revenue? Isn't it possible that the, that the amount of revenue is a function of where they're located? And also, also maybe a function of other things, other than the, the numbers? It may be a function of the people aren't buying as many, it might be a function of people aren't working as hard to, to bring in the revenue. So I mean, how do you know that if you reduce the numbers, you're going to increase the revenue? I don't, I think you, there would need to be some kind of study on that.
Ms. Valentine, one of the things that is important here to understand is, yes, location, location is like a prime time real estate, right? So those location, and that is what I'm saying, if we eliminate five location that are, sometime a bad location, probably maybe three of them a bad location, because, because you're going to get the veterans group that's going to select first the good location, the prime location. Then you got five other organizations that's going to buy lottery, decide which location to pick. So those that are on the bottom of the, of the, of the lottery, is going to pick a bad location, because I have to tell you, there was, because this is what is a firework companies also, they eliminate some location, because these owners wants a lot of money for a week. Imagine that one location wants $22,000 for a whole seven days, and then we have to pay $11,000. And then if you, sometimes you do not make profit of $11,000. So you automatically in the, here, be, if, before you start. So that's what I'm saying, is to eliminate the competition among these locations, especially for the firework company that has to negotiate maybe only five good location for the city that has been making money, have history, because we have those statistics. It shows which location makes the best money. We have those.
But by, by, by eliminating those two or three, that doesn't guarantee that the traffic is going to be diverted into Central Hawthorne, and they're going to increase the traffic at those other fireworks stands. A lot of these are in the peripheries of LA, Hawthorne, they might go to Gardena.
No, but people sometimes does know how, sometime they figure, okay, because they now, you go on social media, it tells you there is a firework stand on 118 and Hawthorne Boulevard. And Phantom promote those location, TNT promote those location, so they know exactly where to go even before they get out of the freeway, because even though some people come from the beach cities to buy, to buy, to buy firework.
You know what?
I have, I have another question.
You want to go?
Do we, do we know for a fact that there were some locations where people made a lot of money?
Mike, speak on that, please. Mike, speak on that, please.
We work our tails off. Okay, listen, it's a combination of a lot of things that make a successful firework stand. Location, obviously, is one. Then what the, what the firework company charges for that location, and whatever kind of deal you could cut with them, there's some locations that are just terrible, there's no point having a location there. I mean, I agree with that.
So, your location was successful?
Well, my location, first of all, I represent veterans, combat wounded veterans. So, we've got a certain amount of people that will just come travel to buy fireworks from us, that a lot of other people don't. We have a good location, but I think what we do, that probably more, and I don't wanna, you know, everybody else has got their own opinion, we really work hard. We open up early, we close late, and we're always there. And I have, I have always, you know, just a ton of people, you know?
But, you know what, honestly, folks, I think by attrition, these groups are starting to drop out. I remember we used to have twelve, fifteen groups.
Well, that's...
And we used to have, that's why we had a lottery. Now, it's not even a lottery, it's just eight slots and eight positions. So, it's like, little by little, these people are saying, you know, this ain't, this isn't even worth it. And so, it's not worth it, period. It's starting to become not even worth it for the veterans groups.
I, I think, for me, I would be, you know, if we lost that, we're not gonna close our foundation, but that is a big event for us throughout the year. We spent a whole, a whole week of fellowship and selling, and it's a lot of fun for my group. So, the money is good, but I also get other side benefits from having that.
But could you get other side benefits without having that event? Could you, could you get the side benefits if you had another type of event?
Not a side benefit that's gonna make me twelve, fifteen thousand dollars, we can do that. I don't know what these guys do, okay? So, we're, we make money with that.
You cleared that much?
Well, yeah, we make money, otherwise I wouldn't do it, you know? And so, maybe six may not be a bad idea, or bring the people in and say, "Hey, listen, you're killing us, we're not making any money, let's got a better deal, let's do a sixty-forty, let's talk about that." Because otherwise, we're gonna do away with this thing altogether, and I'm sure that maybe something can happen.
I'm pretty sure they'll be willing to talk.
You know, yeah, I would, if the alternative was, you know, nothing. And, but, you know, Alex was a location that was like out in a prairie by himself out there on a Sunday night. It's pretty sad, you know? So, I can understand his frustration with that. But we're, we're here in a central place that we've been there, like, the advantage is, and that's true, there's an advantage to the veterans, because they've got their own spots. Every, every, but no, but there's other good spots. The problem is, is that they're too expensive. And now, if you can get, you know, we used to be next to Blaze Pizza, loved that spot.
Yeah, remember?
Yeah, but then that became just crazy expensive, so, you know, take it, you know? So, now, the question would be, is a firework company willing to take a little less money, or cut a better deal, or, you know, just talk about that?
And then we'll keep the eight.
Yeah. Because I can give you an example. Maybe do seven and see how seven works, okay?
Let me give you an example. The place that Mike just mentioned, the Glaze Pizza, I was the first organization that put stand there before. That year, I sold every single firework, and they brought me about sixty thousand worth of firework. The profit at the end of the, after, it was twenty-four thousand dollar. It's because we sold out every single firework, because that was the first year they got that location, we got, you know, everything was gone. And then after pay all the overhead costs, the profit was twenty-four thousand dollar. But then, the pizza, the property owners, it was too expensive went up, the lease went up, the parking was an issue. So, all these things. So, that's, because believe me, I have got the good locations, I had, I has been on, you know, Washington Gate and Rose Grant. So, but now, these other location that these fire, these firework companies getting, is because, you know, they wanna get them for cheap. And even believe me, I'm a very good negotiator when it comes down with the firework companies. Sometimes I say, "I'm not paying you no, no rent, no lease, or no nothing, no these, no these, no these." But now, the way goes, things are going, it's not working. And it's not just me, because I've been talking to the Aurora, the Kiwanis, I say, like, all of them. So, it's the Lions, and so it's not just me talking. And that is what actually I want this to be, as a public hearing, that's gonna be published on a daily breeze and everything. So, I want people to come here the next meeting and express their view, their concern. And if they wanna keep it, let's go keep it. If they wanna, no more fireworks in Cedar Hawthorne, I would vote yes, no more fireworks in Cedar Hawthorne.
Yeah, but they're not gonna say that.
I would vote no.
You would vote no, no more fireworks?
No, no, I would vote yes to keep fireworks and try to work it out so it's workable for everyone involved.
But the veterans is working, I'm telling you, because they make some money. And I'm saying, location, location, location is a prank, and I don't wanna cheat them just because some other nonprofits not making money. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, the real question, I'd like to ask an honest question to the veteran, apart from yours, because I think you say you need it. Does the VFW and American Legion, I'm a part of the American Legion, do they, the sons of the American Legion, do they really make, do they really need this to survive?
I don't know what they do.
Do they really need this, or this is just like a cream on the top?
We can bring this out in the public hearing, that would be good to know.
But you know what I'm saying, because this is just gonna really chip away at some of the other nonprofits that would fully benefit, depend on whatever they offer, great service to the community.
You know...
Do you know what I'm saying?
I do.
I would say, let's, let's wait until the public hearings, because we're not gonna make no decision tonight. So, and that's what I want, a debate, and then I want the public to be the one, the voice to tell us. Because whatever they gonna tell us right down that mic, I'm going to make my conscious, because like I said, to me, it doesn't make no difference.
Well, okay, so then, so then, if we can look, I would support a public hearing on this, and the conversation, and the public, blah, blah, et cetera. If we, three or four years' worth of participants who have come, who have been denied, you know, we just look them up, and we make sure that we invite them personally to come to that thing.
Not denied. Watch out the word, it's not denied.
Well, they have not been, they have not been picked, but then they go away thinking that they've been denied. Now, they will if we pass.
You should get all the different components that have a dog in this fight, and have them, everybody, you know? I will say, let me, one, there's been, you know, several times when we've had people in the audience say, "Listen, this is bad for the veterans, it sets the dogs, the veterans are being affected by this." And out in the audience is the Legion, the BFW, and us shaking our head, but let us have our stand. So, you know, you know, I don't know what the budget is for the Legion or the BFW, I don't know what they do. We've raised and given away seven hundred thousand dollars and to, you know, so every penny helps, okay?
Mr. City Attorney, could you track down, like, can you get the girls from the finance to get all the applicants who have been here, and make sure that they get a letter, invite them to the next meeting? So, the last four years would be good, I think that'd be good coverage. Those who were not selected, and those who were selected.
Include the veterans, okay?
Well, of course.
Because I wanna hear from the posts.
Everybody who participated in the last four lotteries, I think you could just look at the minutes.
Go up to five years. Go up to five years, because every two years, they can only participate every two years.
Mr. City Clerk, could you help, like, we could track down the minutes?
It's only every, yeah, because you have to go back maybe about six years.
I just wanna point that if you wanna buy some fireworks, we're gonna be over at the...
You're already going to be crazy right there.
I just wanna...
But maybe the city clerk's office could look that information through the minutes for the last five years, and maybe the letter can come out of their office or something, just letting them know. It's public information, right? All right, thank you, all right.
I didn't thought it was going across from my...
Not controversy, my friend, dude. I just wanted to be fair, because then, I'm gonna get calls as to why I didn't make sure that some of these people were there to say something.
The firework company is gonna come in and oppose it.
Oh, well.
You know, in Longdale, they can't charge more than a thousand dollars or something like that, they got a better deal in Longdale. You know, they got a better deal in Hawthorne, I mean, in Longdale.
A lot of people don't want fireworks. I mean, come on, you know, it's, we get people coming up saying because of their animals and their...
America's birthday.
But just remember that there is more illegal firework in the city than anything else. Because it's like a war zone on the Fourth of July at...
It's got nothing to do with what we sell.
It has nothing to do with what we do have on those stands. Exactly, they go to Vegas, they go to Arizona, they go to Mexico, and bring all the illegals.
How do you know about all that?
Look in the sky.
What happened was, okay, guys, we're just, we're having some good fun up here, we're having some good fun. So, all right, is that a direction for... So, we don't even vote, we all kind of concur that we should be brought up, but with that help from the city clerk's office. Mr. City Treasurer, your final comments for the night?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we go to closed session, go ahead, sir.
I just wanna thank the community for coming out and participating in the process and letting all your voices be heard. I wanna continue to continue to do, I wanna encourage you to continue to do that, encourage your neighbors to come out and share your experiences and your insights, your positive experiences in the areas in which the city can grow as well. So, I definitely appreciate your participation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Clerk?
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and those of you watching at home. So, a few things, first of all, our office hosted a city clerks meeting yesterday. It was a great event that provided us the opportunity to learn about all the great things that our neighboring cities are doing. Thank you to the city clerk offices from Torrance, Redondo Beach, Gardena, Inglewood, and Inglewood for joining us. I wanna commend our office staff, because one big aha moment that we had was to learn that our city clerk's staff is smaller than our neighboring cities, including those with smaller populations. This is not to complain, but to commend our city clerk's office staff and interns. For context, Redondo Beach has sixty-seven thousand people with four full-time and four part-time staff members. Gardena has a population of sixty-two thousand people with four full-time staff members. In comparison, Hawthorne has a population of eighty-eight thousand people with two full-time and one part-time employee. Again, this is not a complaint, but an opportunity to praise our city clerk team, trying to keep it positive, for their good work with limited resources, okay? So, if anyone's complaining about not being efficient, the city clerk's office is being efficient.
Yeah, that's here for the city club.
I think I get the hint.
Yeah, I hope you guys get the hint. This is a reminder that one of our interns is writing for, writing some Hawthorne news stories for the Herald Press. So, if any of you have suggestions on stories for the newspaper, please contact me at phumenes@cityofhawthorne.org. As a reminder, if you're not on Nextdoor, on the Nextdoor application, please get on. We have, at this point, eight thousand eight hundred members on it. In asking our neighbors, I'm also asking our elected officials, if you're not on it, please make sure you're on Nextdoor, and our directors as well. So, even if you don't live in Hawthorne, we can help you get on Nextdoor, and just go ahead and contact me for that. That is all, thank you, and a happy Latinx Heritage Month.
There we go, yeah. All right, Councilmember Hadara Watt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanna thank the audience for coming out, for those at home watching, and that's it, have a wonderful night.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mike Daye there?
Okay, I, this young lady Beth that came over to speak with us today, she's really a sharp girl, doing some really, really great work with the, yeah, with the female. She's, you guys may not know her, but she's very well-respected, and her opinions count and carry weight. And I appreciate hater, you know, trying to push this veteran project. And so, I think that I'm, you know, I was very excited about that project, because I wanted Hawthorne to put together a simple project to house veterans, not complicated, not... You know, today, high density is not really the thing that everybody wants, something fairly simple, but for veterans. And if it's small enough that you can just duplicate that and go next door, and have the next city pick one of those lots that they have that they don't know what they're doing, and do the same thing, and then go somewhere else and do the same thing. Now, you're really doing something for veteran housing. Now, the minute, I stumbled on the Planning Commission meeting last night, and I was late, and I missed a little bit of what was being said, but everybody had some, you know, pretty good ideas. The, I'm sorry, the Veteran Commission. Oh, that night, that night on this Nextdoor, there was an article by, I don't wanna mention names, because, but it was immediately Hawthorne is doing a homeless shelter. Hawthorne is giving away three million dollars, Hawthorne is giving away two million dollars. And I wanted to, you know, I wanted to clarify, so I did talk to Sherry, and I spoke with Russell, because I wanted to confirm something, you know? That's not a piece of land that we can sell, take the money, and pay bills. We don't have the ability to do that. All we can do is use that money for housing, or, you know, so, the premise that she was, this particular person was trying to make, is that we're giving away our money, you know? We're just throwing our money away, we're not using it properly, we can't, you know? And so, there's some key words that always frighten everybody, which is transitional housing. Almost every vet is a low-income guy, you don't have to make a big deal about that. I think if you keep that project somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen units, and keep it simple, and allow females and single moms, and, you know, it'll be a winner. It'll be a winner, you put a flag out in front, give them some places where they can, you know, have a little garden and go out and smoke a cigarette or whatever, it'll be a winner, that's what people want. You know, the minute that you try to complicate it, well, you gotta provide this service, or you gotta provide that service, all that, that's a killer, because you don't need that. You got the VA down the street, you got Gardena Vet Center down the street, you got Long Beach, you know? So, those issues should not, I mean, that's my opinion. And there's so many vets, and I just know, and I just deal with the young guys. So, I sometimes get a little heat, because I don't talk about the older guys, but there's a lot of guys with a VASH, a HUD VASH, which is a Section Eight certificate, that you could fill up that place like that. You know, you gotta do is call the VASH Department in West LA, call the VASH Department in Long Beach, and say, "Listen, I got a beautiful eighteen-unit building over here, brand new," and they'll fill it. Because the vets is like Section Eight, they get what's left over, and usually, it's not really good stuff, and not very nice places. And I think that's gonna be a great project, and I hope that it continues, and that we're lucky enough to find the right people to do the job. And keep it simple, not, you know, that would be my suggestion, don't complicate it, keep it simple. Singles, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, family units, you know? And so, boy, I went off on that one. Let me see what else.
Mike, Tess, or, because you said Beth?
Tess.
Tess, all right.
Tess, yeah. Sharp girl, I run into her every now and then, you know?
Collaborative?
Yeah, yeah, real stuff, you know? And then, I'm glad to see Lucy, finally, somebody's working with Lucy on this Airbnb. That's, you know, she's a nice girl, trying to do a good job and do the right things, and I think we should help her if we can. And, oh, I stopped at the Earth Cafe, man, that place is beautiful. So, you know, I came a little late for anything, but I understand that we're having a...
Twenty-seven.
A twenty-seven Sunday, what time is that?
Grand opening, eleven AM.
Yeah, that's a great addition, boy, it's a really good place, so, you know? And then, you know, this thing about clarifying and make it clear that we're not throwing away five million dollars, because that's what's going out there, that's what's being posted, you know? I know, but, you know, if people go, "Wow, you kidding?" you know, blah, 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 you know? So, it's gotta be somebody, maybe the city clerk who's on, that might wanna put out a...
I don't have enough staff to do those kinds of things.
Okay, 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 I got it, no, but it's a truth, somebody, you're right, apologize, sorry. Okay, you know, but no, but you're on that Nextdoor quite a bit. Yeah, you're on Nextdoor quite a bit. Okay, that's it for me, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero? Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, uh, yeah, actually, I, I agree with Mike. So it, actually, it's a great for, for the city of Hawthorne because it was two things on the agenda, you know, the Cordary property, that definitely, you know, for the veterans, uh, for low-income, uh, veterans, especially very, very low-income veterans, uh, that needs housing. Uh, and then I was, uh, happy also to see that, you know, we're gonna put another request for proposal for chodo, you know, for the, to build affordable housing too. So at least we are, we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, uh, because, like we know, the re, arena numbers are coming and we need to do more affordable housing. So by, by speeding up this project, you know, give us, uh, heads almost like a leg on, on this, what's coming up down the pipe about the, the affordable housing. So, and, and one other thing that people have to understand, the cities, we cannot build affordable housing. The state said no, the cities cannot build. So we have to send the proposal out to get some, some nonprofit developers to come in and do the work for the city. So that is why this proposal looks like that. So read it. So sometimes these people on Nextdoor, you know, they don't have their facts straight, so, but, maybe it's an education process, but at least we know what we're doing. So, uh, and the voters vote on us to, to make these tough decisions. So that is where we want to take care of our veterans, our seniors, our, uh, low-income families. So thank you, uh, Arnie and, and the Planning Department and Russell to keep us up to date on this issue. So thank you very much. I want to say thank you to the Hawthorne President's Council. You know, last Thursday night, uh, like, uh, Ms. William mentioned, we serve about two-hundred-and-fifty dinners, uh, and, uh, that night we raised six-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-dollar that is gonna go to the, uh, Holiday Assistance Program, that we're gonna give, uh, you know, food baskets and turkeys on November first and also during Christmas time. So, and, um, and this year, because, uh, uh, some of you know the word Operation Gobble. Uh, the, um, Golden State Water Company is going to donate twenty-eight turkeys. Uh, so, twenty-eight turkeys. And I already have two-hundred-and-fifty families waiting for turkeys. So, uh, so we're gonna do everything on November twenty-first, starting at ten AM at the South Campus on fourteen-zero-one-three Yukon Avenue. So the South Campus is one of the school, uh, property of the Hawthorne School District. Uh, November twenty-first at ten AM, so, and, and some of you probably would've got some, uh, invitation, invitation to go there. Uh, the other good event that we attended was the South Bay Whip, you know, uh, graduation for the alum nine, it was very well-attended, so thank you. And I want to thank, you know, the Iman to come in and talk about the, the Islamic, you know, faith. Uh, the champions, it was good to see them, you know, soccer is one of my passions. And also the, the Lions, you know, again, I have to say thank you to the California Lions Friends and Society, uh, because, you know, to, to give glasses to needy families for free, like I said, you know, so it was a hundred-and-forty-nine of them, so it was very, very good. Um, coming up, Saturday, the twenty-sixth, uh, you have a workshop. The Metro is having a workshop at the Lenox Library on forty-three fifty-nine Lenox Boulevard in Lenox at ten AM to noon. They're gonna discuss about buses and routes. They're gonna change some routes and some buses in the South Bay. That includes Inglewood, Hawthorne, Lundell and, and Lenox. So if you want to talk and put your ideas in paper about the metro and the bus route that's gonna be changed soon, so go to the workshop at ten AM. But before you go to workshop, so go to the Hawthorne High at eight o'clock in the morning. So we're having the Fun Run and the Health Fair, so you be there, get your run, get your door prices, and then go to Lenox for the workshop, okay? So, again, uh, Saturday, the twenty-sixth, eight, eight, oops, eight AM at the Hawthorne High, at the football field, we're having the Fun Run and the Health Fair. And then at ten AM, the Metro is having the workshop. And also on that same day, this, the West Bay Municipal Water District is having a water festival. So, a lot of good things happening. And thank you for guys for coming, and happy Halloween!
Awesome. Okay, uh, Mayor Protem?
Yes, just a couple of things. Um, the, uh, KHHR Communities Network Committee, um, which is our, uh, which is our airport committee, held its, um, quarterly meeting on October seventeenth. And, um, just to mention a couple of highlights, the city of Hawthorne announced that it has received a grant from the FAA to do a Part One-Fifty study, which will determine the location and impact of aircraft noise in the, on the community. So, um, that will be coming up, and, um, we will be inviting community input at the time, um, at the time. There will be community workshops to determine where the noise is coming from and what effect it is having on various, uh, various communities. Um, we had a representative from Star Helicopters who gave an overview of safe helicopter operations, which was really good. This is a great connect, network committee. Um, I'm so glad we formed it. Um, there are seventeen communities that participate, uh, both within Hawthorne and outside of Hawthorne. And everybody gets a chance to express their views on, um, how noise is affecting their community. And the FAA came, and the FAA gave, um, a good description of what the part, what we could expect from the Part One-Fifty study. Um, last week, the League of California held its annual conference and expo in Long Beach. I will be talking a little bit at length about that, but not tonight. But there were a couple of things I'd like to mention about it. First of all, um, you know that the, the governor was pushing, well, first of all, the League of California Cities is the advocate for the cities in Sacramento, which talks about, um, what bills, what, what impact bills will have on cities and what we should support and what we should oppose. Um, so they, they talked about some that were successful and some that were sidelined. Two of them I want to mention, SB Three-Thirty and AB Sixty-eight. I'd like to ask, uh, those, those actually were signed by the governor. They could be very, uh, worrisome for us. And I'd like to get, uh, uh, the city attorney to provide a legal confidential, a legal confidential on the impact of both of those, um, both of those new laws. They're not bills anymore, they're laws now. The other thing, the league has, um, what it, it calls, uh, a municipal financial health di- diagnostic. It's a fourteen-point diagnostic tool, which will provide the city information as to the city's financial health. So, um, they strongly recommend that cities use that municipal financial health diagnostic. I'd like for the, um, I'd like to ask the city manager to look into that and see if that's something that would benefit our finance department. Um, I want to thank the seniors for the Senior Resource Fair. I went, I went and, um, uh, the resource fair was held. Um, it had, there were many vendors there who had services that are beneficial to seniors. I want to thank you for having that. I want to thank, uh, Councilman Montero for the community barbecue dinner. Um, he's, it, it's always a really dynamic event. Um, thanks to him and the President's Council for the, for, for that funding event, which helps the Holiday Assistance Program for needy families. So thank you, Councilman Montero, for that effort. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you and have a good week.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Alright, so, I'm really happy for today's meeting. I think we had a great discussion, and, uh, thank you for bringing that up, the fireworks discussion. Um, it's something that we've always thought about, we've talked about it five years. Councilmember Tayeda, we, we have similar thoughts on the issue. It's, it's always been like, uh, you know, it's kind of depressing when, after everybody counts the money, then they don't take anything that would help their nonprofits. They put in more work, and they got even, the, the cost return was just, uh, it was not good for a lot of groups. And so I think if we just start addressing that, it's gonna be good. So I'm open to see what comes out of that. Great barbecue dinner, uh, Councilmember Montero and, and the President's Council. I enjoyed myself being there, and, uh, great prizes that you guys, there's always great prizes for the raffle. So everybody has, there's like a high likelihood you win, so, I think, what did I get? I got like... I got a, did I get a crock pot again or something?
A grill.
No, it was the, the George Foreman Grill.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good fry.
Yeah, so the grease.
Thanks, the Kwanis.
For that?
Because for cooking a lot.
Oh, yeah, and the Kwanis Club is a great, always helps in doing the cooking of the chicken and putting everything together in the back. So, it's good to see them. And it was good to see, uh, former councilmember Nilo Michelin, who was here today. So it was good to see him. Um, we, we see, we know he's doing great things over there in El Camino. So it's good that he's coming back and giving us reports and staying in touch with our community. So... So the today, exactly, I'm really happy about the, I'm really happy about the veterans housing that we're, uh, talked about over here on Cordary. So about a year and a half, when I talked to the city manager and, uh, together with him, we proposed this item. Yeah, it was very important to me that we, uh, make sure and ensure that it was going to be built by a nonprofit developer. What does that mean? And I just want you guys to understand that developers build up cities. Developers have the potential of building up cities, but then there's unscrupulous and snake-like developers that only want to come and, uh, profit, rape and pillage our community and take advantage, and they build these monstrosities, like the thing over there on Crenshaw Boulevard, it's gonna be like two-hundred-and-fifty units over two acres, or whatever it is, two-hundred-and-thirty. I still think that that's a bad project. But if we let them, they'll come in and exploit what we have, our few resources, and they'll take away the quality of life that people could have. So it was important that we kept the, uh, density at this location at eighteen units. If it would've been more, it would've been detrimental to the quality of the life for the residents, for the veterans that would be there. So, we still need to be on guard with a lot of these unscrupulous developers. This Nextdoor thing that you hear about is only the tentacles of some of these unscrupulous developers that are reaching Nextdoor. Because they wanted to purchase, they wanted this thing to be put out so that they could build high-density housing, two, three, four, or five, uh, stories of it. So we need to be very, uh, careful. Their tentacles reach far, okay? And they, they think they could... And a lot of these people, I'm gonna just say it, a lot of people come from Rancho Palos Verdes, Rolling Hills Estate, the peninsula cities. A lot of our, the owners, apartment owners here, live up there. They come in here, they think it's okay to let the people just put like, uh, sofas and use the mattresses. And I get calls every day because they're not taking care of their, uh, properties and cleaning up. And they complain because we're telling them to do the, but the response that I get, you know, you know what I've heard from these developers and some of these owners? It's just Hawthorne, look, it's Hawthorne. So, I hate to say, I don't want to say, I want to say, I don't care, you know, even more, screw it. We're gonna go after them, and we're gonna punish them for if they don't keep our city clean. It's our responsibility to keep our city clean and to make sure we hold up the, the front line against these people coming in and developing junk. And, uh, we need the current people who own a lot of these apartment buildings in Juanita Gardens. I got a, there was a video that was being, uh, posted on Nextdoor, and I agree. And a lot of those are those problem apartment buildings where they have like piles of sofas that all of a sudden appear overnight. Ms. Joy, uh, Canilia, I think it was, she posted something. So we take that to heart. And so I don't care how much they complain. If we have to cite them every day, we need to do it. And if we need to be more aggressive, we need to do that. And if, you know, if we need to get more code enforcement people to go a couple more, so that they could spend full-time doing that, let's do it. But we gotta keep our community clean, because there's people who don't care, that live in other parts of this, uh, county that just own and just come and exploit. That's why you guys elected us, to keep our community clean and our quality of life, and we're gonna do it. So, um, I take that to heart. You guys know what my sentiment has always been, and we're all on guard here. We all better be on guard. If anybody goes away, I'm gonna pop you in the head. Alright, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Alright, on another note, um, I just want to make sure I give the community this information. There are free flu shots available at the LA County Library, and the events will be, uh, for your benefit. I'm sorry, not, not, not this library, but for, uh, uh, October twenty-eighth from one-thirty to three-thirty, they'll be available at the Lenox Library in Lenox. And on Saturday, November twenty-third, they'll be available at the Hawthorne Library. So make sure if you, you, you should get a flu shot, and make sure you, if you have an opportunity, get a free one, why not? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And, uh, Councilmember Montero mentioned something about a chodo project. Um, let's make sure that we put that out and give enough chodos out there, an opportunity to apply, and make sure that we're, when we vet these guys pretty carefully, making sure that they have the community's best interest in development. We have had bad experiences in the past, and we better have learned from our mistakes.
I'm gonna be watching.
Amen, city manager?
And I know everything about chodo.
Alright, alright, guys, so, so much for all that. Thank you guys all for coming. We have a, uh, closed session item in the back. Is there anybody that wants to talk about that? Uh, for all the people out in the audience, you guys should probably just head home, because after we come out, we're just gonna vote on this thing and just go home right away, okay? So, uh, if not, I declare oral communication is closed. I will now recess the city council meeting to conduct a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. We're in recess.
To order, and we've met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we met on item number 25, closed session, conference with labor negotiator regarding HP MSG, and the labor negotiator has been instructed.
We don't need a vote?
No.
Okay. I declare this meeting closed ordered.[1774.10][1774.10](knock on door)